Councilman Fraser. Councilman Lance is excused. Uh, Council, um, Councilman Cybert will be present, he's lightly clean. Uh, Councilwoman Tamar. And Councilwoman Jordan. All members.
Okay, very good. We have several items on agenda, and we will begin with the first item being Comcast Cable's proposed transfer agreement. Will you agree on that?
Thank you. Um, so, we wanted to update council tonight, um, with respect to the proposed transfer request by Comcast Cable. Um, we have been before council before on this issue. Um, in particular, we talked about Comcast merging, the potential for Comcast merging with Time Warner. Part of that, the agreement has been that Comcast would divest itself of subscribers in several states, one of those states being Michigan. And ultimately, a new company called Greatland would take over the operation of the cable system in Michigan, obviously including Southfield. So, as part of that proposed transfer, uh, we've had discussions, we've had, um, um, issues that we feel are important to the city. Uh, one of the primary issues that we've been wrestling with with Comcast has to do with the ownership and the rights to the INET, which was built back in, uh, when the original, uh, when the cable franchise was, uh, developed about fifteen years ago. Um, the city put money into that, that, um, construction of that INET as well as Comcast. So, those, those dialogues have been taking place. Um, we're also concerned and have attempted to get information with respect to the, the company that will now be operating the system, in terms of its ability financially to operate the system. We're concerned about what effect it would have on subscriber rates for our residents. And so, those are the kind of discussions we've been having. Um, we also, the council approved, uh, back last year, uh, retaining Joe Van Eaton and Mike Wasner, both cable attorneys, to work with us on these issues and they are there this evening. And I thought maybe if, if, uh, Joe Van Eaton could come up and just do a short presentation on kind of where we are. We're not asking for any, um, action of the council at this point. I did note in my letter that, um, the period for the city to either approve or not approve the transfer request currently stands at February twenty-seventh. So, depending upon how we go with, with discussions and negotiations, uh, we may well be back before council at the February twenty-third meeting with a request to take some type of action and a recommendation from staff at this time. But, at that time, at this point, we simply want to update, let everybody know where we are, um, and just put everybody kind of on a, on a page where they understand what the issues have been and kind of the direction we've been trying to, to get to. So, if Joe could kind of-
Do you prefer me to sit here or go to the podium?
Probably the podium.
Can I ask you a question before you-
Sure.
You say that we have the ability to say yes or no on a transfer?
Well, we believe, absolutely we believe we do. In our franchise agreement, which is, we've now extended that franchise agreement, says that any transfer of control has to be approved by the city council. It's our franchise agreement with Comcast, and that's the provision we're operating under. So, I don't know, Joe, you might want to go into that as well. But absolutely, we believe we have the, the discretion here to either approve or not approve this transfer request.
So, if we say no, then Comcast could say, "Good luck."
Well, then, they have an existing franchise agreement about, so again, I think, look, can we let Joe kind of go into-
Yeah, I'll, I'll-
Can you give us your address and your business address for the record, please?
Sure. Uh, my, uh, name is Joe Van Eaton. I'm with Best, Bestin Krieger in their Washington DC office on Suite 5002,000 Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest, Washington DC. Uh, those are both good questions. That, as the city attorney mentioned, you have before you an application that was filed by Comcast to approve a transfer, a change of control of franchising from Comcast to a company that will become known as Greatland Connections. Uh, and so, what I'd like to do, that's obviously part of a very large transaction, which I think leads to your, uh, question. But, let me go over first what your authority is, where we are in the process, what your options are, and how we propose to move forward. Basically, you are somewhat unique among, uh, Michigan communities. You entered into, uh, as you know, the state passed a law, PA 480, that established a uniform franchise agreement, but allowed in section thirteen for communities to enter into a modified agreement that could be filed with the PUC and that would govern the relationship between the parties. That's what Southfield did. They filed, entered into a modified, uniform franchise agreement with Comcast, and that modified agreement says you have the authority to review changes of control. And the standard you use in determining whether the change of control should be granted is whether the change of control is in the public interest. That's what the franchise that was filed in PUC says. Other communities still have the old franchises that were issued before the Uniform Act passed. And those communities have very strong arguments under some cases that were decided in this case, that they also have the authority to review, but, uh, the transaction. But you have a modified agreement that clearly gives you that authority. So, that's one of the reasons you're in an interesting position as compared to other Michigan communities, and why I think the issue is more, uh, is teed up in a, uh, in a different way in this community. So, um, where are you in the process? Well, you have, uh, a hundred and twenty days from the date an application is submitted to either make a decision to grant the transfer, to deny it, or if you do nothing, federal law says if you fail to act by a deadline, it's deemed granted. So, silence is consent here. Um, the hundred and twenty days can be extended by agreement, and by agreement, we've agreed that the, the first date on which it can expire is February twenty-seventh of this month. That's why it will come up at the February twenty-third meeting, is because right now that's the deadline we've got with Comcast. It could still be extended, but right now, that's the deadline we're working on. And, uh, um, we got the application, I believe, last April or May. Since that time, the city, along with other communities, has been looking at this transaction as closely as it can, and been trying to get information from Comcast. Unfortunately, a number of our efforts to get information from Comcast, from Greatland and Charter have been rebunked. That's one of the reasons this process has taken so long. Uh, nonetheless, uh, you did get a series of reports, uh, a report from Ashpond Skolko and Front Range Consulting, who analyzed the financial aspects of this deal. And independently, staff has been looking at other issues surrounding, uh, the transaction, including the technical qualifications of the company, and some other issues surrounding the ability of the company to perform going forward. So, that's where you, um, that's, uh, what you've been doing then, is an ongoing review contemplated by federal law, and we're now wanting to report certain decisions. So, um, where, where do we think we are in the process? Well, the Ashpond Skolko and Front Range Consulting report concluded, and of course, this is disputed by Comcast, I, that they will no doubt be submitting information to the city to rebut that report. But their conclusion was, the company failed, the company failed to show that Greatland would be qualified to perform going forward without increases in rates, decreases in services, or other things, or without taking other actions that could harm subscribers, based on what they see as the likely cash flows and financial provision of this company going forward. That's the essence, I think, of their report, is that the company's having shown that financially qualified. And I think that's obviously a concern to the city. Uh, the second thing we concluded, we looked at, is that this company, unlike Comcast, which has basically provided services as Comcast to the entire community, Greatland is going to be working with two companies to provide a complete set of services to subscribers. For about the first eighteen months after, if the sale goes through, uh, it will be involved, it will have a transition services agreement with Comcast, under which Comcast will be providing a number of services. And we will additionally have an agreement with Charter, a Charter services agreement, under which Charter will provide a lot of functions you would normally think would be provided by the cable operator. So, we looked at those agreements to see whether those would guarantee, or those provided enough assurance that you would get adequate customer service in this community, recognizing obviously that Charter's, uh, ratings and J.D. Powers and other places is not great. This is not identified as the best cable company in the country, obviously. The, um, our conclusion was that there was not enough protection for subscribers, and not enough way to ensure that Greatland would be in a position to ensure both that Charter would perform, and to take action if it failed to perform, that would protect, uh, consumers. So, the technical issues were concerned. Um, the city attorney mentioned a dispute as to the institutional network. That's obviously a critical piece of city infrastructure at hand. And the city's position is that it actually amended, yeah, that when it entered into the franchise originally, it amended that franchise, and came up with an addendum under which it paid a significant amount for the INET, and it owned the INET. Comcast obviously disputes that, but in the context of a change in ownership, we think it's reasonable for the city to say, "We'd like to settle the issue of ownership. We don't want to let somebody effectively buy the house and find out that they don't own a critical room that may be important to them, and we obviously don't want them to take it over and say, 'Well, maybe the room belongs to you and maybe it doesn't,' no one knows." Uh, so, the idea is to, with, that there's an outstanding claim of some importance that needs to be resolved. Uh, one of the things we look at in a transfer is, did the company cooperate in the transfer process, something that's obviously critical to our ability to get information and make a reasonable assessment in the public interest. The conclusion, uh, in the A&amp;S report, uh, or the financial report was, they did not cooperate. They did not provide requested information that would have allowed the consultants to do a full analysis of the impact of the transaction. And finally, you have a, your uniform, your modified franchise expires in September. One of the things we want to be sure we understand, and, and obviously, this deal assumes that Greatland Connections will not only obtain, uh, ownership, or, uh, obtain control of the local franchisee, but that ultimately will be, be able to continue to provide service over an extended period of time. And obviously, if the franchise is about to expire, the question is, will there be terms going forward, or is this company coming in for effectively six or seven months before we enter into, uh, sort of a legal limbo or a renewal at home? So, that's a concern. So, um, those issues are up concern. We think that those would justify saying no to the transaction, but that's obviously not what we're here, uh, saying today. What are your options, basically? Well, one option you have is to say, is to listen to Comcast, look at the materials they present and say at the end on the twenty-third, you know, "We'd like to go ahead and approve this transaction without conditions." You do have to worry about the financial impact, the technical impact, and you have to worry about what that means for your institutional network. So, I think those are significant concerns, and, uh, you know, ought to lean against saying yes. The other thing you can do is do nothing, but that essentially has the same effect as saying yes. You could deny. That would lead to an interesting situation, which I think was alluded to before, which is, what happens with this transaction if you deny? Well, the way the deal is structured, the company is actually close to this big deal as long as they reach a certain percentage of approvals. And I think they've probably reached that percentage of approvals to close the deal. So, Time Warner could merge with Comcast no matter what you do, if assuming that the federal government approves of the transaction, they've got an independent review going on. And likewise, I suspect that the Greatland Charter Comcast merger could also go through, which would leave, but Charter would not be able to dispose of the system. It would be in a position where it would have to figure out a way to provide service in the system. And that would, uh, obviously be a situation that I think is uncomfortable for you and uncomfortable for them as well. The other alternative besides, but, but that may be where you need to go to protect consumers and to protect your own interests. The other option is to approve subject to condition. The company has entered into agreements for approval subject to conditions in a number of communities, either as part of a overall renewal, or as part of a transfer of the system, and agree, and, uh, have been working on conditions that are designed to protect the public, to protect the community, and to resolve some of the outstanding issues. Right now, your staff has presented, I believe, this morning, presented a set of conditions to Comcast where they would be willing to approve if those conditions are acceptable to Comcast. I don't think you'd want to approve subject to conditions that Comcast doesn't agree to, there would be no point to that. But, uh, the best result would be if you can reach agreement and cooperative negotiation with the company that would protect the consumer, protect the city, and allow the deal to go forward on a reasonable basis. So, that's sort of where you are. You are in that process of discussing things with Comcast, and, uh, we would hope that we'd be able to report something back at the meeting on the twenty-third that will, excuse me, that there had been an agreement on reasonable terms, and if there hasn't, obviously, it would then be up to you to decide where to go from there. Any questions?
Any questions? How much pressure?
Uh, it seems like on a, on a pragmatic, uh, scale, that, uh, if we said no, and they have enough votes yes, to go ahead and make the transfer, because all the other states or other entities are using different rules than we're using, uh, we would be the lone holdout, and, uh, it could, our service could go sideways, and we wouldn't have much recourse, um, because they would probably spend most of the, the time, uh, dealing with any concerns that had, for the companies that have said yes, either overtly or by not saying anything, and, and Time made the decision for them. So, um, it puts us in a, in a kind of a difficult situation, too.
It does, but I will say that historically, if, if, historically, the company has an interest in maintaining the subscribers here. They're very valuable to it. And if it's willing to let service slide in a way that would violate its franchise and allow you to potentially revoke that franchise, you could always sit back and say, you know, "Is there anybody else who'd like to serve this community?" And I think there would be some, some operators who'd be willing to serve the community, some of the smaller operators who'd be willing to step in and provide adequate service to the community, and would be in a position to do that.
Yeah, that, probably, but they probably wouldn't have the leverage of purchasing programs from whoever's providing the programs on a basis that, so our rates would probably go sky high.
Well, I think one of the problems with this transaction that is identified in the A&amp;S report is that Comcast has, um, relatively low per subscriber program rate compared to other entities in the industry. Um, we've gotten no, we've asked for information as to what Greatland Connections will be able to buy the, the services that, it will not be able to buy them through Comcast.
Right.
It will be buying them through Charter.
Sure.
And Charter does not have the buying power Comcast has. There is a national cooperative, a small cable operator that buys, uh, groups of cable programs. So, it's not obvious that, that, that having a different operator entirely would lead to any more cost than one could anticipate as a result of Charter's operations.
I guess, you know, colloquyism, I guess we got to figure out what the dog does when he catches the bus, huh?
(laughing) That's a, that's a, it's a fair point, and one helps, one helps that, 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 that this is something where you can reach agreement with the company and move forward on a basis that's reasonable for everyone.
And I, and I think that's the goal.
Yes.
That's been the goal.
It is.
We're, we're trying to get to a middle position where we can come to this body and recommend something that protects the city's interest as well as, say, guards the, the interest of the subscribers.
But both teams are playing hardball.
Well, I, I, I understand.
Yes.
I mean, of course, I don't think we're playing, I think we're trying to get to a point where really, we can come to you and recommend something.
Good.
I don't think anybody wants to deny this transfer, but, but we've got to be able to stand behind the recommendation to you, and know that we've done the best for the city, and we've done the best for the subscribers.
Good.
Is that, is that a Comcast, kind of preemptive, you chose that that there's 1.2 million customers, is that the only way that that merger could take place, is there any way that they could maintain?
Uh, I, I honestly don't know. This, this was a choice that they made in order to keep the number of subscribers, the percentage of basic service subscribers, under thirty percent of the national total, where they ventured a, a roughly 2.5 million subscribers. Uh, could they have kept them and, and-
Could there be another community, some way to-
I, I don't think, I, I think one of the interesting things about the merger, and actually, you know, bigger picture is troubling, is what, what's happening is Comcast is basically going to control most of the cable systems on the east coast and the west coast, and that if you look at the map, Charter and Greatland will collectively control most of the Midwest, with the exception of Chicago.
They get the people, we get the geography.
(laughing) Yes, if, if you look at the geography, it is, it is, it is a concentration of these companies in regions that's part of what's occurring. So, actually, in some ways, they're going to get more market power than they had before. So, instead of having someone nearby who's a competing company, Charter and Comcast, you'll effectively have the entire state controlled by Charter, and, uh, a company through which, in which they own thirty-three percent, and who will still be providing services for four-point-five percent of gross revenue.
I have a question for you, Mike. If you, uh, the change of control on Comcast, if they're also going to provide, I probably get a question later, cable, internet, phones, everything that's currently provided under the Comcast, will they come?
Well, I know they'll be providing cable. I'm confident they'll be providing internet and telephone services. I do not know whether, there are a couple of things that Comcast provides that I don't know that they will be able to provide. For example, the advanced X1 box. I know the box may be in the home. I believe that's a proprietary technology. The functionality, I'm not sure will be maintained on the system. And some of you may have noticed that Comcast put up Wi-Fi terminals throughout many of its communities. I'm not sure whether those will be maintained, the Wi-Fi capability, but I'm hoping somebody from Comcast can maybe be able to address that issue. The, um, the other issue is home security services, which are being provided by Comcast. Comcast is now providing a range of services. All we're dealing with is really the cable franchise side of it. So, I can't say anything with respect to whether those will all continue under Greatland or not. Uh, I suspect it depends on the business opportunity Greatland receives.
Well, and you said that Greatland being a new company, they won't have the ability to give a low subscriber rate as opposed to Comcast?
Well, they're actually buying programming effectively through Charter. Charter does not have the same buying power Comcast has. I think it's fair to say Comcast has the greatest buying power in the, in the cable industry. So, uh, um, for Charter communities, at least based on the trend reports that your financial analysts looked at, the per subscriber costs for Charter are higher than the per subscriber cost for Comcast.
So, in essence, the rate would go up once the transfer, should the transfer occur?
It all depends what margins the company is demanding. Obviously, one can, what, that is one of the concerns, is that there will be cost pressures on the company, and the question is, will that lead to a raised rate or not?
And that's a big question. If the rates are going to go up, are we going to be able to have the same services, uh, currently provided, and if we can maintain that? Okay, if there's not any other questions, we will allow, uh, Mike Wasner, did you want to add anything?
Just, just very quickly, if I may, uh, I want to mention this. Uh, Joe did a great summary, uh, but some, two things, Charter. We deal with Charter, I deal with Charter in the northern part of Michigan where they've been, and, uh, they are much more aggressive about getting after some of what you have been receiving as free services, um, drops, things like that. Comcast has been a pretty good corporate citizen in terms of providing a lot of free services. Charter, not so much, just, just so you know. Um, and they, Charter will be coming to town, so that's something to be concerned about. The other thing is, you're going to hear, I suspect, a great deal about PA 480, and that that's the only law here in Michigan. I would simply like to remind you that as members of Pro-Tech and being active in these areas, Southfield has had a voice, and although you weren't a party, you were certainly involved in litigation as a supporter, uh, between Comcast and Dearborn Meridian, Warren and Bloomville Hills. And we proved, I think, pretty clearly, that although PA 480 is a state law, it is subject to the federal Cable Act. That's how things work. Federal law supersedes state law. So, that's been proven, not only in that case, but also in the Detroit versus Comcast case, which you may have heard about. I'm sure we talked about it maybe this past fall. And that is, if, if, if there's conflict between state and federal law, and we think that there are a number of them, and two of them have been brought before federal judges here in the Detroit District Court, and both times Comcast has learned that the federal court thinks that they're preemptive, that the PA 480 has some problems. So, I just would ask you to bear that in mind, that you have been part of successfully challenging PA 480 where it's hurtful or harmful to your residents.
Does the council have any other questions? At this time, uh, we do understand that Comcast is a good company, and if you want to say your name and business address for the record.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Gerald Schmidt Senior, Maga Dexter, Affairs, the Comcast. Uh, before I start, I would like to also introduce two of my colleagues who've joined me, uh, this evening, Leslie Brogan, our Senior Director of, uh, Government Affairs, as well as Mr. Mike Ash, our Legal Counsel. Uh, and if there are questions, certainly, they'll share in the responses. Before I start, I would like to also pass out, as Mr. Van Eaton mentioned, I do have some responses to the Ask Law report that he intimated regarding the finding of viability of Greatland Connections. So, please, I'd like to share that information with you, and refute, if you will, the findings of that particular report. Again, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about some very important changes that are coming to the cable communications business here in Southfield, as well as over four hundred other Michigan communities. Comcast Cable Systems in Michigan and several other states in the Midwest and South are coming to, are going to come under the ownership of a new company temporarily named Midwest Cable, and once the transaction is complete, be named Greatland Connections. Now, Greatland Connections will be a brand-new, independent, publicly traded company, and on day one, Greatland will serve 2.5 million Comcast legacy customers concentrated in the Midwest and South, with almost half of them in Michigan. Now, Greatland will be the nation's fifth-largest TV provider, and the largest market will be right here in southeast Michigan. While it will have a brand-new company here, it will retain existing cable, Comcast cable system assets, and employees will have approximately $4.5 billion in annual revenue, and an estimated value of $14.7 billion. Now, to make this transaction transition from Comcast to Greatland seamless to our customers, there'll be a transitional service agreement between Comcast and Greatland Connections. And now, this is a customary arrangement, uh, in the cable industry. Now, Greatland Connections will, will contract with, uh, Charter Communications to provide some support services, and will benefit from Charter's market presence to secure cable programming at advantageous pricing. I'd also like to highlight that Greatland will be led by a very experienced management team headed by President and CEO Michael Wilner, a highly respected forty-year cable veteran, who was a co-founder of, and CEO of Insight Cable Communications. Now, this series of transactions is subject and reviewed, and reviewed, uh, and approved by the Department of Justice and the Federal Communications Commission. Now, progress filings have been made with both agencies and are currently in the review process. The Greatland transaction will occur after and only when the larger Time Warner Comcast deal is consummated, and we expect fellow review completion by the end of March, and this transaction will then follow within thirty to sixty days. Some of the benefits associated with this transaction and transition to Greatland will provide greater focus on our state and our local markets. Service and reliability will be enhanced for both residential and business customers. And in addition, geographic clustering will enable Comcast or- And in addition, geographic clustering will enable Comcast or Greatland to tailor customer service and improve personnel and equipment service deliveries to Southfield customers. Now, inasmuch as we will focus on the efficient delivery of products and services and reduce costs of doing business, these efficiencies will better allow us to compete on price, quality, innovation, and service with our competitors. Now, much will be discussed about the role of the Southfield in the transfer of this franchise from Comcast to Greatland Connections. Tonight, we will provide and have provided you, if you will, with general information about the transaction and its benefits to the city, as well as information about the financial viability of this new company, and ask, after your review and due diligence, that this honorable body approve the change of control from Comcast to Greatland Connections. We're here, we stand ready to answer any questions that this honorable body may have for myself, so that Ms. Brogan and certainly our Legal Counsel, Mr. Mike Ashton. Thank you.
Yeah. One of the things that you said was that it will be a seamless transfer. That's the objective, is to have a seamless transfer. Now, does that mean that programming will be seamless also?
We have every indication that that process will be a seamless, as I'm telling you right now, our Counselman Frazier. I'm not led to believe anything else. I mean, this is not a new company. It's a new company, but then again, this is not a startup company.
Yeah, no, but different companies have different opportunities. For instance, I could... I have Comcast now in my home. I could transfer to AT&amp;T. They have different programming than Comcast does. So my question is, with this new company, would the seamless transfer mean the programs that I like to watch on a regular basis, would I still be able to expect that that will take place, or will they bring their own set of programs in, and I have to learn new programming?
Okay.
Or do away... Or not watch something that I like to watch now?
We don't want that to happen. Thank you for letting me help Gerald here answer... steal some of your questions. And please give us your name again and business address.
Very good. Leslie Brogan, I am the Senior Director of Government Affairs for Comcast in the Heartland Region, 1401 East Miller Road, Lansing, Michigan. We can't speak for the programming in the future for what Greatland Connections will definitely do, but for now, we can tell you that there are not plans to change the programming, the selection. Part of it, I want to stress here, is that we are in a competitive environment. People can choose to go to a different provider for their services, and they'll do that because of rates, or services, or quality. So that's the incentive for a company like Greatland Connections when they come in, to make sure they're delivering, obviously. We also have to be mindful that we are competing with other cable providers in this very area. And one of the ways which we need to be able to be a healthy, ongoing concern is to have same-level playing field. So while we do want to answer your questions about programming that we know of, or other services that we know will be continued, we also ask this body, what was it that you required AT&amp;T to prove in order to get a franchise here?
What did we... What did we have to ask them?
To prove. Correct.
Did they provide service, for example? I wasn't on the negotiating team, so...
Well, they're operating under the uniform franchise that was alluded to by your consultants public at 480, which the whole state is operating under. There are a few unique circumstances here in Southfield, and we're totally willing to work with the city, you know, to address those. But it was the Michigan Legislature that decided this is how it's going to go in the future, and in order to bring more competition in, there was a very, very strategic plan to make things more uniform. So what we hear, what we hear from the demands, are very different from what the state law has projected. And another thing that I... I'm getting a little bit off kilter here, but another thing I wanted to address is this cable report that the consultants have put before you is really the only financial report on a company that has come out with any of these assertions. We have two college professors that are experienced in this field who have written a response. And because we did not really have a lot of time coming up to this work session, we weren't able to get them here on the phone to address and be able to answer any of your real detailed questions, but we can. And if the Southfield City Council would like that to happen, we can certainly work with you to make that happen. Answer some of the questions.
Okay. I'm listening.
And at a earlier meeting that we had, when the subject came up briefly, as I understood it, while there are other cable companies in the area and in nearby communities, they don't want to come to Southfield for some reason. And I'm sure it has something to do with... I'm really not sure what it has to do with, but it's... This is what I understood from what you said, some of these, at least one of these companies that's nearby, cable company, doesn't want to come to Southfield. I'm not sure of the reason. So we are, it appears, somewhat limited. Now, you can say there's a lot of competition, and there are all kinds of companies out there that might want to come to Southfield. I'm not sure that there are, but I still feel that we're not going to get the service that we have before. And the cause... People have said to me, they're worried about the prices, the cost of this. And I've had that from a number of people, mostly senior citizens, but everybody in this economy is concerned about things like that. So it's, you know, with the programming and the potential extra cost, there's a lot of discomfort in the community from residents that are over here tonight. So I don't know how we... You know, I think people have the right to do what they want, and the government can approve whatever they want, but they don't come and ask us and make their own decisions based on money, power, preference, all kinds of things, politics. I'm not comfortable with this proposal, but at this point, I don't know what our best course of action is, to be honest with you.
Well, I would hope that the best course of action, I think, at this point, is to continue the dialogue that we have with Comcast. And again, the interest here is to continue to move forward with those discussions and arrive... Again, the goal is to arrive at a mutually acceptable arrangement where we can come to you and recommend, and be, you know, in good faith that we possess the rights and we possess the rights and privacy, set, you know, all the consent that we can. And so really, we feel we're still in that process.
So with that said, we're not making any decisions tonight, and we will wait to hear from that before meeting on Tuesday. So if there's not any other questions, I think we can...
It's not a question, but a statement. So I said our course of action is to make sure that you understand what we would like to have.
Yes.
And then you and the team negotiate as best as you can.
Absolutely.
So we're not expected to say yes or no, or whatever, but we're supposed to... You are listed wants.
Right. And I think just in previous dialogue that we've had, that we know that we've talked about, and that council has seen the value of the institutional network, and it's like that all of our communication goes on that institutional network, and how important it is for our public safety and all communication. And then again, of course, the subscribers, to make sure that we feel that we have, you know, not put them in a situation where all of a sudden their cable rates triple, double, triple, something like that. We're trying to make sure that we're looking after their interests.
Yeah, the... The rest of it is probably going to happen, but the I-N-A really is kind of the wedge fence that we need to pay close attention to.
Okay. I'm sure you have something new to add.
My name is Michael Ashton. I'm attorney with Comcast, and Mr. Smith has asked me just to address real quickly the transfer process under Act 480. When the Michigan Legislature adopted Act 480, they took a move away from a utility type of regulation of cable. They decided, as matter of state policy, that competition would govern the provision of services, so that it wouldn't be the type of rate regulation or other types of regulations on cable companies. The idea was to open up the field and allow competition to determine what that is. So maybe there's not a lot of cable companies coming in. I know AT&amp;T is here. I know there's other competition from DirecTV and satellite providers. And then if you have internet services, there's also what's called over-the-top providers, Netflix, Amazon, Prime, those types of services. So what the Michigan Legislature saw was, we don't need to worry about regulating rates because competition is going to govern what someone's in charge for their services. When Ford sells a automobile, they don't get to look at what the cost... It costs them to build the automobile. They have to look at what General Motors and Toyota are selling similar automobiles for, and they have to fix their price in the competitive market. So there's that issue. And part of Act 480's process was to streamline the regulatory process. And with respect to transfers, the transfer under the Act is simply the parties transfer the franchise and then provide notice to the community after the transfer occurs. So in most of our Michigan communities, there hasn't been an issue with respect to the transfer. The transfer's gone smoothly. In addition, even... There's another layer of protection that Act 480 provides for providers, which is a competitive or level playing field provisions, which says if you have AT&amp;T, if AT&amp;T has a uniform franchise agreement, which allows them to transfer without, you know, with notice after the fact, those same terms need to be applied to other providers in your community. You can't enforce more stringent requirements on one provider as opposed to another provider who has a franchise. So that's aspects of PA 480. But even if you ignored PA 480, and you just looked at the terms of your existing franchise, your historical franchise, the consent to... Cannot be unreasonably upheld, in Section 10.5.2 of the franchise, the municipality should not unreasonably withhold its consent. So... And then the consent is tied to conditions related to financial, technical, or legal qualification. So it's a very narrow set of circumstances. And there's been one federal case dealing with what rights the municipality has to deny a franchise. And in that case, the court held that consent should... A denial of consent should only be upheld if there's substantial evidence for the reason for denial. In other words, there has to be substantial evidence for the denial, the support of denial. So even if you ignored Act 480, which makes it very easy to transfer franchises, and you look under the existing franchise and the case law, it's still a very high burden to deny a franchise. So we just want to hope you keep that in mind. I know it's challenging for a community that has to go through this process, particularly with Act 480 now being in place and relying on competition. So that's really the choice that the Michigan Legislature enacted. And Comcast does feel like it's in a competitive market. I mean, it not only has to compete against AT&amp;T here, but it has to compete against satellite providers and over-the-top providers. And when Greatland comes into the community and starts providing services, they'll have to do the same. So that... There's that level of protection. The Michigan Legislature decided it would be competitive rather than a regulatory framework. I just appreciate having the opportunity to address those issues.
All right. But I guess what I've heard is that Southfield has a modified agreement.
Yeah.
And we have a right in the authority to change it.
Right. And I understand what you're saying. All due respect to the judge, and I mean, obviously, there is a difference of legal standing here. So I...
The other piece, too, is AT&amp;T was very instrumental in negotiating PA 480. They have D pockets, and so it was the 800-pound gorilla that was helping negotiate that. So a lot of those things are favorable to AT&amp;T.
A hundred percent agree with you, and we're competing in the marketplace against that 800-pound gorilla, too.
And the thing is, and I understand everything you've said, but I consider my role, I can't speak for anybody else, but I consider my role as to watch out for the residents of the city of Southfield, get the best deal that I can for the city of Southfield. So whatever we can do, we need to do. You may not like us, but we still have to do what we have to do.
But I think that's all of our role.
True.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. We'll be in touch.
Good evening, Counsel. Tonight, we have Representative of Denzel, Mr. Mark Trudeau, and Matt Bacon from AECOM would like the opportunity to address Counsel to discuss an alteration to the existing entrance marker sign at the intersection of Denzel Drive and Telegraph Road. And the existing sign actually reads Oak Hollow, and it's located in the median entrance on Denzel Drive, which actually is in the right-of-way. And back in 1987, as part of Site Plan 778, the Counsel approved the site plan with the following condition, that the entrance marker identify the subdivision only, and that no individual sign or name be placed on the marker. Denzel would like the Counsel to consider amending that sign from Oak Hollow to reference Denzel. We're just here tonight for discussion purposes, and if there is a consensus to move forward, it would come back at your February 23 meeting. Now, it's unusual that there is signage placed in the right-of-way, and it is outside of the signed ordinance. This was approved by Counsel, and it would take an amendment of Counsel to make a change. But as I stated, I wanted to bring it forth, at least for discussion purposes tonight, so that the applicant could have some direction on moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bacon and Mr. Trudeau to explain what the reasoning is and what they're looking for at Counsel, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Counsel may have. Thank you.
Okay. And so, gentlemen, we are looking for, giving us your name and business address.
Sure. My name is Matt Bacon, AECOM. I'm an engineer for AECOM. My address is 2777 Franklin Drive in Southfield. The reasoning is, as Terry pointed out, over the course of the last three years, Denzel International, which I'm sure you're all aware of, has acquired all the properties that once comprised Oak Hollow. So as a means of simplifying the signage at Telegraph Denzel, they now wish to replace that panel. They maintain that area. They replaced the sign a year ago after it was destroyed in a car accident. We're seeking permission to change the panel out to read Denzel.
And if I could, there are no other structural changes to signs not being enlarged or raised in height.
Terry, before I ask the question, is that, is the size of what's proposed similar to what we're putting on our sidewalk on the driveway?
Uh, I believe it's smaller. Yes. I don't know. Mr. Gardella is actually here. I don't know if you know the dimensions.
Do you know the dimensions of our sign versus that one?
This is much smaller. It's very small in scale. That's actually very skewed, the drawing is.
Are they trying to be something larger than them?
No. They're just, they're just planning on swapping out the panel itself. And so the panel size is 2 feet 1 inches by 8 feet. Like I said, this, this was just delivered to us. I think that's a little out of scale.
I think it had to do with the printing. When it printed, it made it skewed from eight and a half by 11.
Is the frame of that showing what, if it's a real frame?
Correct. It would actually...
It's an interesting frame.
Okay. My question is, is it really going to look like there's red on white?
That was the concept. They have a, that their sign is typically a white, red lettering.
For as much technology that happened in the, in there, I don't think the sign effectively communicates what you've done. And, you know, the city, we, the last two auto shows what's happening at Denzel is just mind-blowing, the things they're doing from safety and the cafe standards and the support. The sign needs a little step up, and, and I'm no architect or designer, and I'm not opposed to the red, but I think it's how it's framed and presented. You need to speak to what we see, what I see happening when I tour the facility usually twice a year. They've been, you know, one of our largest employers. We've been a partner in our, you know, multiple tax abeyments through the years. You know, I, I think the Oak Hollow work, you know, had more of a rustic feel, but I wouldn't mind seeing something just a little more, you know, sleeker.
I'm not finished. I, I hate to say this, but I think it looks more sexy. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't warrant that you've got a wonderful organization here that does go around all things, and then you put something that looks like you just cut it all the magazine and paste it all over.
If I, if I may.
If you don't do something, what?
I understand. If I may, I, I believe our initial conversation, we were kind of led to believe that, given the fact that it was in the right-of-way, our best course of action would have tried to leave the sign as it was, to simply replace the panel. But I believe, Mark, if I may, I believe Denzel would be open to enhancing the look of the sign.
If I, if I could.
Let me finish with that. Because you need to leave that, that frame there. Can't put red on white. It doesn't, it doesn't say what Denzel does.
Okay.
Okay? You understand the saying, that, huh?
I understand. I follow. I certainly believe they'd be open to...
You need to clarify, you want to...
Okay.
I have to agree with people. I'm really careful myself personally, but I don't have a problem with having some signage there. One thing that came to my mind initially was the Public Art Commission that we just started working on, has a possibility of, I think, we're coming to think of it, start here and make something, maybe a piece of artwork that shows Denzel, you know, that speaks to who it is and so forth, would be a great first effort at, at the Public Art if we're going to make that, that amendment to the ordinance. So if we had something like that, I'd definitely be considering that support there.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I just wanted to point out that first, the Council has to have a consensus that they agree that they would allow to change the, the name of the sign. And I, I did not have the, the ability to review what was proposed until walking in tonight. If, if there's a consensus that the sign can be amended, and then taking comments that the Council is tonight, we will work with them to bring back a, a more refined vision. And, and what I would ask is that if you're willing to allow them to do more than just change the panel sign, which was the basic assumption that they could possibly do, and you're, you're agreeing to maybe a different size and height and material, then that could be part of your final approval that we bring back to you in the future.
Well, there's several comments I'd like to make. One is, do you know how far into the right-of-way it is?
It appears to be 15 feet off of the sidewalk, and typically sidewalks are located one foot within the right-of-way, so approximately 14 feet inside the right-of-way is a quick reference.
Okay. If, if the design of the, of the sign changes, and it moves back off the right-of-way, because obviously it's in a place where a car can run over it, you, you want to put a sign, you know, at least far enough away that it's not directly in the line of an automobile like accident. But you, you really don't know what caused the accident, or how far the car would have gone anyhow.
Right. And, and they do design with breakaways now. And so that, we worked with Mr. Gardella. Again, it was to bring whether or not there was even an appetite or consensus to move forward, and then we would refine the proposal and things like that to the Council.
I agree with Mr. Cruz about Public Art. This is our technical corridor, our technology corridor, and this would be an idea, ideal opportunity to put some kind of a landmark sign out there that would enhance the fact that it is the technology corridor. And, you know, that's one of the things that the Public Art folks and the sign folks are going to have to settle on, you know, what can, what can happen. So, but the other thing, sort of, the easiest way to get that done is to change the name of subdivision, subdivision, name what that word was.
Well, that wasn't one of the options that was being considered.
Then you have, wouldn't have to worry about it, because that's, that falls right in sign.
Exactly. And what's interesting is the actual name of the subdivision isn't even Oak Hollow. So I don't know how that name got approved in the first place.
It's along the Oak Street.
Right. But, but the, the condition was that it had to be named after the subdivision, and the subdivision has something completely different name on the books.
But, yeah, I, I agree primarily with my comment here, that it should, it should say something other than Denzel. Okay? I see.
My only comment would be, as you've noticed on the existing sign, it had some directional nature. I really think that whether the sculpture conveys a directional nature into the, you know, into the street, that, you know, some, some element convey some sort of direction in there so that people know that they're coming in to, to Denzel down that drive. That would be my only comment.
Okay. Well, why don't we have the consensus of, of, to allow the sign change and to, if you're Public Art, Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and we'll bring back some additional concepts. Thank you. Thank you.
At this item, I have a few deposits here, as well as our purchasing director, Mickey Luck. When we first assessed, none of these are take-home vehicles. They're recommended that we buy 15 vehicle for replacement, two Chevy Tavos, five Chevy Caprices, and six Ford Fusions. The total amount for this is $347,177. Because these, these were done on competitive bidding, we're requesting that we, in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 1.29, Subsection 3, that you told them, by contracting with or through a unit of government aimed with the State of Michigan Cooperative Purchasing Program, was for this purchases in 2015, voted for equipment replacement in town. And I have both two deposits, Ben, Mickey Luck, and you answer any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Yes. And we'll play the 23rd for the regular agenda.
Council, any questions?
Yes. The statement says that none of our take-home vehicles. The, I think most of these are full-size automobiles, which I presume would be painted to the police cars. But the Fusions, I can't, I can't imagine that that would be considered a police car. A marked police car?
Um, yes. Those Fusions are actually detectives' or investigators' vehicles. So every year, we have vehicles that come in, come in service and go out of service based on age and usage, and so this, so this particular year, we have some vehicles that are going out of service. Detectives' vehicles. So these vehicles would actually replace those vehicles that are being taken out of service.
That are typically unmarked?
Yes. Yeah, those, those Fusions are unmarked vehicles.
Okay. Do they have, are they porcupines? With the antennas on them?
They, they've got a porcupine on, on the back end.
Okay. But they won't, they won't be taken home?
Those are not take-home vehicles.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions, Council? Okay. Without any opposition, Mr. Goon, our Emergency Management Director, is here to make a presentation of the flooding that occurred in August 2014.
Good evening, Madam President, Council. I wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with FEMA. The city of Southfield signed our FEMA exit forms on January 30th. As a effect of January 30th, FEMA has closed the joint field office, and they've moved all the operations to Chicago, reaching Fines, and still processing. The city of Southfield officially is done. Throughout the whole region, this disaster, we had 73,000 people that applied throughout all three counties, and $151 million were allocated through the three counties. The city of Southfield, we have approved dollar amount, and this is not loans, this is the real dollar amounts that came to the city of Southfield, broken down into two categories. One was individual assistance, which goes to residents, and the other one was public assistance, which reimburses the city at a 75% rate. $1.7 million, $1.6 million which are residents, and that's real dollars. $142,000 came back to the city of South, well, it's coming back to the city of Southfield for the public assistance. That's the two categories. One was category B, which is the first 72 hours, and the next was the sustained actions for debris removal. We're going to get $142,000 coming back to the city. Because of this disaster, we have been allocated, the state of Michigan has been allocated $20 million for hazard mitigation. Because this council in 2013 adopted the Oakland County Hazard Mitigation Plan, we have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan that makes us eligible to apply for that funding. So I think that we have a good chance. We're going to be putting in a notice of intent to put a project together. We're still working with the engineer and public works on what we can do to, um, excuse me, to get some funds back from the hazard mitigation.
If I may add, we actually have HRC who's worked in a lot of these, in a number of other communities, reviewing the 250-page application materials and working with engineers to see if we can find a way to provide additional relief to Sections 24 and 25 on stormwater.
In this whole process, did we find out anything that needs to be corrected as far as stormwater handling? And I realize that the...
I, I would, clearly, the number one thing that hurt us when people started lifting the storm covers. This area, restrictors, catch bases with restrictors have that put in for a reason, that the street is designed to hold the water so it can move in a more slidy. Once people started open, lifting the bases out, thinking that they were helping, they exacerbated the problem. And have we completed the tack welding, Lee, or...
No.
No.
Larry's right there.
Oh, Larry. And Larry can, I didn't realize Larry was here. I'm sorry.
We replaced the covers, but we didn't weld them. We're going to tack weld all of them down. We never really thought anyone would pick them up with them under two foot of water, so we didn't, we didn't weld them. This will be doing half the string.
Now, you're talking about the ones in the curving?
Yeah. So the ones that have kids a couple holes in them to allow the water to go in for a little tacking down.
Did we, did we learn anything about our, the capacity of our sewers that we need to fix?
Well, it was seven and a half inches of rain. That was it. I mean, they just couldn't hold it. And for, for a day-to-day basis, the system works, but this was a once-in-a-300-year rain event.
I understand that.
However, we know in this room that there's been a greater frequency of insurance claims that we care to see as a community, and we are pursuing alternative remedies to correct that. And that's where we're going with these hazardous mitigation dollars. Can we get the, can we use a federal grant to pick up a part of that cost? And, and I'll caution everyone that, you know, everyone thinks this is a city. The equivalent on this is a homeowner, if a separate system were built, and this is a combined system, the homeowner would still have a cost equivalent to what we have with our septic connection. They would still have to bear the private cost of doing this. So we're going to continue to look for the most cost-effective manner to buy additional storage, and, and I think, frankly, that's where we're going with the FEMA grant.
Okay. Just a curiosity, what are we doing with Jeffrey Byder?
That, actually, the city was dismissed because that was a county interceptor that actually was the, that's what actually was the culprit in terms of the flooding of his office. But again, that case was dismissed against the county as well, because again, you have to be, the law's very clear on what you have to show, and the number one thing you have to show is that there was a defect in the system. And as in that case and as in this instance, there's no defect. When you get that level of, of water, no system, whether it's combined, not combined, no system is designed to handle that volume of water. And so it, they were not successful, but they certainly, we got out of that lawsuit fairly quickly.
Okay. Well, if, if it was designed to carry that kind of water, it would have been a waste of money for 900, uh, or 299 years out of the 300 years.
That's it. That's exactly right. Nobody builds them for a 300-year storm event.
Okay. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our emergency management...
Madam President, Lee Schultz, our active city engineer, will be presenting this item. She will be outlining 43 million...
Going on at another meeting?
And propose bond activities for years one through three. On February 23rd, we will bring forward to City Council the bond language prepared by Miller Canfield to move that first issuance forward.
Good evening, Council, Madam President. So I believe in everyone's package, you should have with this council item, some maps in the back. I just want to make sure they came out in colors so that, okay. I brought some extra some of those. So overall, these first three years, I'm first going to refer you to the spreadsheet, which is the second page of the item, and just go over the spreadsheet quickly. In the upper right-hand corner, those are the costs for the three-year projects that are city costs, so the city road costs, and then the city water costs. And then the rest of the spreadsheet kind of gives you the total, the total project costs, and then there's a column on where we have outside funding sources. So overall, for the three years, we've got over $86 million of projects that we're going to be moving forward with. The 43 million that Fred referred to for the street bond, that's just all of the road costs that are associated with these. And as you have seen...
All right, the next item on our emergency management, what projects funded with the first two in my script?
Madam President, Lee Schultz, our active city engineer, will be presenting this item. She will be outlining forty-three million--
Going on, is there another meeting?
And propose bond activities for years one through three. On February twenty-third, we will bring forward to the city council the bond language prepared by Miller Canfield to move that first issuance forward.
Good evening, Council, Madam President. So I believe in everyone's package, you should have with this council item, some maps in the back. I just want to make sure they came out in colors so that, okay, I brought some extra some there. So overall, these first three years, I'm first going to refer you to the spreadsheet, which is the second page of the item, and just go over the spreadsheet quickly. In the upper right-hand corner, those are the costs for the three-year projects that are city costs. So the city road costs and then the city water costs. And then the rest of the spreadsheet kind of gives you the total, the total project costs, and then there's a column on where we have outside funding sources. So overall, for the three years, we've got over eighty-six million dollars of projects that we're going to be moving forward with. The forty-three million that Fred referred to for the street bond, that's just all of the road costs that are associated with these. And as you have seen last year, a lot of the projects, especially in these first three years of our ten-year program, are, the neighborhood projects are really focused on where we had water needs. So most of those projects are water main replacement projects, as well as rehabilitating the roads or reconstructing the roads, whichever was appropriate. And I was just quickly going to go through the projects for each year. So the first year, as you'll be seeing, as the next council item, I'll get into more detail, but we're looking at reconstructing Bridge Street and Hilltop, that industrial park sub, that is a total reconstruction, just a road reconstruction in concrete. We've also got Eleven Mile, which you have seen previously, this is where we got some economic development funds to resurface that road from Franklin to the cul-de-sac of BASF. The third project, this one's still a little bit tentative, but we are looking to pave an alley. It's behind, it's considered the Greenfield Alley because it's adjacent to Greenfield Road, it's just south of Twelve Mile. So this alley goes from Sand Rosa, and then it goes right up into the Walgreens that's there at that corner. So that alley is an existing gravel alley that's never been improved. Businesses have been having some drainage problems in some of these large rain events, and there's not really any specific drainage pattern. So we're going to go in a pretty simple paving job, maybe one stretch of storm sewer, and at least get a nice hard surface and a positive drainage for that alleyway. The next project you've probably also seen, the Northbound Northwestern Service Drive Project from Eight to Nine Mile, that's adjacent to Northland Center. That's moving forward, we have federal funds for that, that will be constructed this year. We also, to be constructed this year, have Nine Mile Road from Beach to Telegraph. This is also federal dollars that will be used to help construct this road. This is a road widening project from a two-lane to a three-lane cross-section with curving gutter. We have Providence Drive, we receive funding for Providence Drive through that funding, the road priority paving project that came from the state. We have funding to go from JL Hudson up to Nine Mile. The city's going to do it as one project and extend it all the way over to Greenfield Road. That project will have some water main improvements. The majority of the water main under Providence Drive is really in pretty good shape, it's just some of the connections that connect into that, so we will be spending some water dollars there as well. Our next big project is the Southbound Northwestern Service Drive. That starts over where Bird Road kind of dead-ends, or converts, not really dead-end, converts into that service drive for Northwestern. So it starts over there and goes all the way down to Evergreen Road. A portion of this project over where Bird, where it meets Bird, is a total reconstruction, and that pretty much takes you to the exit ramp coming off of the freeway, and then the remainder of the project is a resurfacing project, just a heavy mill and overlay there. That project we actually have twenty-seventeen funding for, but we are, we've received authorization from the Federal Aid Committee to advance construct that project. This is adjacent to where that dirt development is coming in along the service drive there. And those funds can be, we can apply for the reimbursement in October of twenty sixteen for those twenty-seventeen funds. The next project gets into where we're coming into the local streets, and section eleven was a very good candidate for a heavy concrete patching program. So we're coming in there, hitting almost the entire section where we have concrete and taking care of all of the bad slabs of pavement we have in there. Because we've got some good and some bad, and it's kind of peppered throughout the whole The next project is Meadowvale subdivision in section twelve. This is a project that was really driven by the water main replacement needs. So we're going to be replacing the water main there and then doing the road repairs as necessary over there. Those concrete roads in Meadowvale will be spot repaired, the exception being Everett, which will be a total reconstruction for the South half mile. Next project is in section thirteen, there's south of Twelve Mile, Cambridge Village subdivision. So this is in the southwest quarter of section thirteen, and this one also was driven by the water replacement needs. This is subdivision, originally, we were looking at just doing some concrete patching. The history of this subdivision was back when we paved it in the nineties, was when that ASR, that alkali silica reaction, when we were first identifying that in pavement, this was one of those subdivisions that was first hit, and that being the culprit. It's got some really bad areas, and other areas, when you drive by, don't look so bad, but once you get out and take a look at the pavement, there's a lot of micro-cracking, so that ASR is really taking effect, and if we're coming in and are going to be spending this money, it really makes more sense to remove all of it and reconstruct that subdivision. Next, we have down in section thirty-four, Phase One of our section thirty-four, water main and road rehabilitation project. And those are those first streets on the west side of Evergreen, just north of Eight Mile there. That's been an area where the fire flow needs have been evident, and the fire department has been talking to us for a long time about that. So we're moving forward with that project. And then similarly, in section thirty-five, our Phase One of that project in this West Magnolia subdivision, we're going to be hitting four streets there with water main replacement and road resurfacing of those asphalt streets. So that first year, this twenty-fifteen year, we're going to be doing over thirty-seven million dollars in projects. Over twenty million in roads, you know, for the city's share of road funding alone. Moving to the twenty-sixteen project, we've got Bell Road from Eleven to Twelve Mile, this is going to be water main and the road resurfacing. We are looking at doing sidewalks for this road as well. Most of this was, the sidewalk itself was previously designed years ago when we had some grant money that ended up not moving forward, so we're hoping that one should be pretty seamless if we get all the improvements that we apparently needed back then. We've also got in section twenty-eight, this Green Valley and Bird Hills, I call it, and this project also water main replacement and then the road resurfacing in here. We have Evergreen from Twelve to Thirteen Mile, this is federal dollars that we have that we're going to move forward with in twenty sixteen. That will be a simple mill and overlay, that's the only road resurfacing in that project. We've got in section fifteen, there's a subdivision just north of Winchester, Kingsley Estate subdivision, that is a concrete subdivision, we are going to be doing water main replacement there and just concrete patching. And then in section thirty-five, back down there in twenty sixteen, to do more water mains in the southeast quadrant of that section, and we'll be rehabilitating those asphalt streets. And then over in section nineteen, going into Peak Skill and Way Crop subdivision, that's just on the north side of Ten Mile, east of Inkster, and that one's going to be a water main project and road rehabilitation of that asphalt street. And then the next item on the spreadsheet is really just numerical because that's when we're going to be getting, in our twenty-sixteen year, we're going to be getting the payback for that Southbound Northwestern Service Drive project from the Fed, one point five five four million dollars there. So we move into twenty-seventeen, we've got in section thirteen, north of Catalpa, we're doing a water main replacement project there, and that one will be, those roads are asphalt roads, so we'll be doing asphalt rehabilitation with that water main replacement. And then we have Pierce Road from Eleven Mile to Catalpa, and this one is purely the road project here up here, so this is going to be pavement reconstruction for that piece of Pierce Road. And then we have Mount Vernon from Greenfield all the way over to the Service Drive. We do have water main work in this area, and this will be a road reconstruction as well. Then over in section sixteen, we've got the Bell Woods, north and south Bell Woods, that's just east of Bell Road. This is going to be water main replacement and asphalt road resurfacing. And then we're looking to redo the roads on Northland Drive from the Service Drive over to Greenfield. So trying to hit a lot of these roads, these CDA roads have been lucky to receive some federal funding in recent years, and then this upcoming year, getting the Service Drive done. It'll be nice to get Northland Drive done. You know, we had previously submitted for a federal grant for JL Hudson Drive, weren't successful with that first submission, but we'll be applying to that one again as well, trying to make infrastructure improvements and get that road resurfaced. Our last big project in twenty-seventeen is a new bridge, bridge replacement, this is on Nine Mile over the Evans Creek. So that's over by Sutton Place Apartments, or by the Palm Hollow Golf Course there, that's a large bridge, been expanded over the years, so it has dual history there. The original bridge is still there, and at some point, it was widened when the road went wider. So altogether, that's eighty-six million dollars of investment. We are really excited to be able to move forward with some of these road improvement projects into the street bond path. Focusing where we have, where we know we have the water main needs already, really help us extend the road dollars. You know, whatever portion of the road is disturbed based on the water main, we can utilize some of the water funds for that piece of the road too. So makes sense if we're going to be redoing these roads, that we make sure we've got good infrastructure underneath. Are there any questions on those projects?
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. On any of this road work, is, are there homes that are on septic? Are these all on water already? For instance, the Peak Skill and Way Crop, are they on septic or are they?
I don't know, yes. I'm not sure if Peak Skill and Way Crop was part of that pollution control, when we put that in or not. It doesn't, no?
Older sewer.
Older sewer, so everyone should be connected to it, so.
And any of the others that are on septic?
I don't think so.
No, only if there was just an oddball in there.
Okay.
Right, as I'm looking at these, I'm not seeing any that are jumping out that were any part of our new, our new worth, they're not so new anymore, but our last was west side sewer project. So, you know, a lot of those roads will be, we probably will be hitting those roads within this ten-year road program, because a lot of those asphalt roads are getting to the point where you could do a pretty thin mill and overlay, it's relatively inexpensive project, and boom, you take your road that had fallen into fair condition, and now it's in good condition. And that's kind of the, supposed to be the smart way to manage these roads, is get them when they're in those fair conditions and make them good, your overall network gets a lot better. This is knowing that we still have to focus on some of these roads that are in poor condition, and these first few years, we really try to focus on some of those worst areas.
Now, one other question then is, when you're doing this road work, it seems to me that the no-turn-on-red signs that we have are not always placed in a way that people can see them, and I, you know, there are some that it's no-turn-on-red on a right-hand side, but it's a two-lane turnaround, and so someone on the left side wouldn't be able to see it. And if there's a traffic signal, it just seems to me that we ought to do the same thing if it's on the corner of Twelve and Greenfield, where it's hanging up by the, up by the traffic signal itself--
Right.
--so that people can't say, "I didn't see it."
Mm-hmm.
Whatever we can to improve the no-turn-on-red.
Yeah, that's something we can talk to traffic engineering about, because they regularly are going out and reviewing the signage at the same time that they're looking at the striping that needs to be redone, so we can make sure we're paying close attention to that.
Yeah, because you see it all the time, people pull up to the light, and if there's no traffic coming around the corner, they go, even though there's a no-turn-on-red.
So do they see the sign, or did they not see the sign?
I think that it's been there all along, and they don't see it anymore.
Yeah, that could be, right.
All right, just on the septic sewer, I think where you're going with that, is any coordination we can do, and we will certainly take a look at that. I share with the members of the David Services Committee, we know we've got fifteen hundred homes, and we're about to roll out a very different strategy of enforcement.
Sure. Yeah, just saw on the news today about potholes and so forth, we don't have to wait on any of this necessarily, to kind of, we're kind of challenged by the press, if you will, by keeping up with filling these potholes and--
We are, we are going to, it'll be our second year of the Channel Seven Pothole Fledge. Last year, we were able to pass the test. Council last month approved eight hundred tons of coal patch, and we've got the material and do our best to hit that goal. Really relying on people communicating those actions. I think the worst for us will probably be the Service Drive in front of Target in May season. I know last year, I know I was out at first thing in the morning at three o'clock, we still had people patching that stretch of road. And a number of hotspots, I run, by the OCC, too.
I hear about this.
And I'm thinking that one day, it's like trucks were there all day, I mean, I think, watch, a new truck delivered materials, guys came in, the other truck delivered materials, and they were working a rotation. We're prepared.
I'm ready--
And all of this was less than that.
Yep. That's, yes, our crews will be happy once we get some of these worst roads done, because that frees up, you know, the pothole crews from having to be visiting the same areas over and over and over. So, yeah, we'll continue to keep the roads safe by keeping the pothole still until we can come through with more permanent repairs.
So let me ask you a question, you know, with the voters approving this road bond, is there any way you can probably put the city on a grid where one section of the city you go through and make sure that the potholes are taken care of in the neighborhood, so that the residents feel that their dollars are really at work? Because some of these projects, you know--
Right.
What can we do to make sure that the neighbors are salary-reducing to those?
We originally did a six-year plan on this, and we know we need to come back and fine-tune it. The plan is driven by our Pacer rating, the condition of the road, and you have some roads that are at average going into four, that if you can invest in those, preserve them, you'll get another fifteen, twenty years of life out of it. That's, I think, the objective of the SPOT program, where last year, if you recall, council approved a million dollars for asphalt, we were able to go in, we did Pierce-- Pierce, right, some of our real bad areas inside the dump, of course, on my point right now, but we did nine really bad areas in asphalt, two really bad areas in concrete. Just-- What we need to do, and we could figure this out, is last year, we did some longer stretches, and those, you know, Pierce was a road that, like the Northwestern Service Drive, the guys were constantly filling. We need to figure out how to do that in a smaller section, when you've got that one sinkhole wall, most. Because that's, you know, they're not, like Pierce was a lot of edge cracking and surface draining, where some of the stuff we have is what I would call, they're almost sinkholes, like a clay ball or something popped up that is moving with hydrology. And that's, we will figure that out, because those are, ideally, you want to go in, just cut that spot out, patch it, fill it up.
Because on my street, I mean, we've got perfect streets, but there's one big, you know, area that needs to patch it.
It looks like that was created by the trench from the water service crossing. We had dropped out with coal patch last year, and this year, we're hoping to be able to do more cutting out of the bad area and putting in hot necks, rolling the roller over and whatnot. And make-- Fill it up, keep the water out of it, because the water's going to make it worse. Now, we may have to come to a point where we have crews out there, GPS map them all, and then come through in just kind of a SPOT, a real aggressive SPOT program.
And even if our police and court enforcement, we may find something, you know, report it back to us.
Yep. Put the next issue of your app online, and the residents will tell you.
Well, that's part of, we can get a lot of them, with a high degree of accuracy.
Yeah.
Do we have a list of properties that are filled on septic? Is it? Yes, we do. You do? Upstairs in my office. Okay. One thousand five hundred and sixty-two homes. Colored map, show you what the pump house is tied to. We're moving this along rather quickly, but we will need to engage council-- One thousand five hundred and sixty-two homes. Colored map, show you what the Palm House is tied to. We're, we're moving this along rather quickly, but we will need to engage council relative to a protocol.
Glad to hear that. The other thing is, you know, we had a quick bit of discussion about Twelve to Thirteen and they're on Evergreen, and we're going ahead with that.
Well, that's.
I know it said you said it's federal, but isn't there a local match to this?
Right.
And engineering cost?
And these are the type of projects, like that is not a very expensive project, and, you know, for a full mile of road. So, and when you drive that road, that road is not in good shape. I mean, we wouldn't be going after it if we were.
Well, you know, I think it, Lee, I certainly trust your judgment, and I'm not going to make a big thing about it, but it's the perception, again, if I were driving Lee Baker on the west of South Hill, that road needs more attention than between Twelve to Thirteen. And it's, you know, I think sometimes we might, you know, something like that, paving that over something that's more needed, it becomes a PR problem for us.
Well, that's where, with all, with this street funding and being responsible with our road dollars to manage our pavement, it's like we're really looking at the overall system, and having the overall network of our road system increase, that's what we want to see. If we only do worst first, all those roads that are in the fair condition quickly fall into the poor condition, and it, you can't catch up, because we don't have enough money to do all that.
I did go out and look at things on Thirteen, driven it many times, obviously, but got out and actually looked at it, and there is a lot of microcracking. You know, it's not a perfect road.
Right, whenever I think of that stretch too, I always think of Up by Thirteen Mile, because right when that pavement ends, you get into that concrete section, and that's especially bad up there. So, it'll be nice to get that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you so much.
The other part to this item is I just wanted to give council a quick update on the projects that we have applied for to the Oakland County Federal Lake Committee for fiscal year 2018 funding. And that's the page four of your item. The colors aren't really all that important, so all that really means is we did one four hour project application, which is an application for reconstruction, and that's Evergreen from Nine Mile up to Northwestern Service Drive. And the rest of the projects that are in purple here are three-hour projects or resurfacing projects. So, we submitted for, let's see, we've got Eleven Mile from Bell Road over to Arlington. So, that takes us through that intersection, well, the intersection itself was done at Lasser, but takes us on both sides of that major intersection where the road really needs a lot of work there. That scored very well on this project. We also have a half-mile section of Evergreen from the I-696 Service Drive up to Weetlaster, and that's the piece before the Boulevard starts. And then we've got Franklin Road from Eleven Mile over to Telegraph. A lot of that is in really bad shape, and we've been, it seems to stand out, because we've been fixing a lot of the roads surrounding that whole area, and this is kind of our last piece over there. We went, we, we're fielding lots and lots of complaints about that road with potholes the last few years. So, we pretty aggressively went after that one with a fifty percent match, and that brought our score up, and that's looking good, like we will probably receive funding there. We've also got the Northwestern Highway Service Drive northbound from Evergreen up to Lasser. And then we've got Civic Center from Lasser to Northwestern. And then two pieces of the I-696 Service Drive, eastbound and westbound, as two separate applications from Southfield to Pierce. And so far, the, we're actually meeting, the Federal Lake Committee meets on Thursday, and they'll see what projects get funded. So far, taking a look at how we scored compared to everyone else, we look like we may get like five of our seven applications funded, which is really good news. And you can tell that Southfield and Royal Oak both had like their mileage and road bond passed, because we've got lots of projects, both of us, you know, as communities. So, we went pretty aggressively after these projects, and sometimes increasing our matches if it was a high priority project. So, I can come back next month with an update on that, just to see how it all panned out and what we have confirmed funding for.
Lee, I didn't hear you mention Lasser between Civic Center and the freeway.
Right, I'm sorry. That was a Row Commission application, so they applied for that one. I had discussions with the Row Commission, what can we do to try and get this to move forward?
It's the side of Greenfield.
Yeah, it really is. It's, it's pretty bad. So, I, that was one where we said that at Southfield, we will maximize our match to that project. So, the Row Commission submitted for that project, but I believe they submitted it as a four-hour project. So, that piece of Lasser really competes with our Evergreen project from Nine Mile up to Northwestern Service Drive, and they're not likely to fund more than one.
There will be a conversation. Red is talking to the county about submitting that stretch of Lasser with the DIR deal, that we would do a joint grant for economic development. Now, we typically don't get complete reconstruction out of those, but that was one of the things. And, you know, we may have this in the nomination process, but there may be conversations going on about that road as well.
But, don't you think Lasser is worse than Evergreen to New York?
I do.
But it's.
But it's not, that's not.
It's not our road.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's, it's not our road, and it's also, it turns into, how many of these reconstruction projects are they going to fund? And if we're, and I don't recall like where everyone falls on the list, but under the four-hour category, if our Evergreen project was first and Lasser was second, you know, we could say, okay, we won't do ours, and you get yours, but we may not. You know, who knows when our opportunity will come up again that we're the top scorer for our project.
Thank you. Glad to hear something else.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the next consideration of special assessment committee for the street.
Mr. Schultze will be presenting this item. Over the course of late 2014, there were a number of meetings with four, four members who have ownership statements in this industrial park, and we were, you know, we were asking if we could do something to the city with this, the Bridge Street Hilltop Road. Familiar with the area, you pretty much recognize that the function available is completely fine and dry. It's not something that our residents use or anyone else. So, this shows.
Right, so tonight, I'm really just here to go over this project. The actual council action won't be until the regular meeting on the 23rd, but it's been a long time since public works has been a special assessment district, and we have some new council. I hope so. I just wanted to quickly go over our, the steps to a special assessment district project that we, that we use. So, typically, how we've done it is there's five steps, and we typically will come to three meetings. So, the first meeting, we come with Resolution One and Two altogether. Resolution Number One refers the project to the city administrator for a report. Resolution Number Two sets the dates for the public hearing as necessity. So, that will be the action council will be asked to take at the February 23 meeting. After that, we'll come back for Resolutions Number Three and Number Four. Number Three declares the project a necessity and directs the assessor to prepare the assessment role. And then Resolution Number Four approves the construction plans and sets the date for the public hearing to confirm the assessment role. And it's really after this meeting that we do Three and Four, that we go out to bid and get prices from contractors. Then we come back for Resolution Number Five. It confirms the special assessment role based on those ad bid prices that we received from the contractor. And typically, as part of the same item, we also award the construction contract to the low bidder. So, just an overview of that process. This particular project for Bridge Street, as Fred said, Bridge Street Industrial Park, it really acts as its own little subdivision there. So, anyone on those streets that works there or does business there, they're the only ones using it, no customer traffic. So, we felt that it was appropriate that we bring this forward as a special assessment. The city is proposing to participate in the cost of the overall project by paying for the design engineering and the construction engineering. So, that, the city's share is estimated at $273,000. The assessable share at $1,447,000, with the total project cost estimated at $1,720,000. So, this road, besides the bridge, which we rebuilt fifteen years ago or so, the rest of the subdivision is all the original concrete from when that park was built in the mid-'70s. So, this is forty-year-old pavement. It's served its lifespan, maybe stretched it a little bit, but now we're in a position, and we're hoping that the property owners will agree that this is the appropriate way to move forward as well.
Just, and I just spoke to the city attorney, and I've not mentioned this, so we, the next meeting will be asking to set the public hearing, but we will conduct some type of open house prior to the public hearing, just so we can have a stronger gauge of what we're maybe dealing with at a public hearing. I know we haven't had one of these in a while, but I want to give our people an opportunity in a, a less formal setting to have a dialogue.
Sure.
Well, an open house to, the public hearing will be at a regular council meeting, but an open house would be the stakeholders along Bridge Street and Hilltop, and we'd just get an opportunity to.
Well, maybe you mean they'll be coming in?
They'll come in, and we'll, and we've done it very successfully with Southfield Road, Evergreen Road, both Eight and Nine Mile, and this northern stretch. But just to give people an opportunity to comment. You know, we did meet with four of them, but, you know, I'd like this, you know, everyone to.
Like them all.
They, they all will be invited.
And you should hope that. Two oh nine nine two Bridge Street is in somebody that sells Detroit Lions Super Bowl sweatshirts or something.
Two what?
Two oh nine nine two. Got a hundred and forty-three thousand assessment.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars a year.
Right, that was our highest assessment. And, you know, we're proposing to spread this out over a ten-year special assessment, so the annual installment, if people paid the minimum, varies from about $2,400 to, what was that big one? To $16,776, so.
I should say, hope he's got someone in Detroit Lions Super Bowl sweatshirts.
Yeah, these are not retail properties.
A square foot is about $257 per linear foot for the street, and it gets real supportive of that. Each of us has per linear footage of our home, $400 of infrastructure, street, sidewalk, sewer, water, you know, so just the street, two hundred and fifty of that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is proposed by the city Beachwood.
Yeah, President, I want to refer this over to Doug Block on our executive administration of New York, how it should propose for Beachwood.
Good evening, council. So, just give us thirty seconds here, so we can. Appreciate it. Section eleven is going to be done in the summer team by twenty-four. Thank you. That's my.
You'd like to see it?
Sure. Good evening, council.
Very much.
Madam President, members of the audience. Tonight, we're here to present the Parks and Recreation Department's vision for the new electronic signage at our Beachwoods Recreation Center. Here with me are Bob Murray, Parks and Operations Supervisor, as well as Ed Gardella, the city sign inspector slash guru, who will give a brief overview of the projects, and we will be happy to entertain any questions if they are finished.
Madam President, council. A while back, the council approved an electronic sign for the front lawn out on Evergreen as part of the project out here. And what we would like to do is do a similar thing out at Beachwoods, not as big of a sign, but also help promote activities at the Beachwoods Arena and Golf Course, which a lot of people don't realize is even there. So, here is a plan that we took before our Parks and Rec Board, and this plan was unanimously picked from the other plans we presented. We had the, the sign company had some people in here to give it some scale, because the original one we proposed, like the Denzel sign, was way out of scale, and I think you can see this a little more exciting than the Denzel sign that was brought up earlier. Okay, just to give you reference as to where we're looking at, this is the Beachwoods Arena. This is the parking lot. We're looking to put the sign in this area, and the reason for that is here's a plan that Mary Carlock did a while back. This, this is the new parking lot by the golf course, it's been redone, and the next phase would be to move the entrance that is currently right here, south down Beachwoods. So, you know, the sign would be placed, you know, over in this location, and the new entrance would come a little bit more in front of the arena. Now, as far as the nuts and bolts of the sign and the specifics, I've got Ed here to answer questions. Can you just connect the line? The aerial?
No.
The actual sign itself. Okay. So, we're looking at a sign with cultured stone, facings on it, electronic sign, will actually have amber lighting on it, be similar unit to what's going to be out on the front lawn, just smaller in scale, can display the same kinds of things what you, that you can out on the, the front lawn. This would be a lit portion, and this could either be a lit portion or unlit, either one the oval could. We're looking to have the, the look of the sign match more with the character of Beachwoods versus the character of what we have out on the front lawn. But hopefully, we'll be looking at a similar manufacturer for the sign itself, because the actual manufacturer that we're looking at has a real tight LED program for it that's very readable. So, it would match that, the sign that's going to be out on the front lawn. As far as height, it does obviously give you a little bit of scale for that, should be very readable. You can kind of see its location to the road, and as far as programming, that would be, you know, obviously, it can do exactly what our ordinance allows as far as multiple changes. So, if there's any questions about that, it'll all be internally illuminated, by the way. The LEDs, obviously illuminated with LEDs, the fees will be internally illuminated, and this could be, to make sure that we don't have any floodlights or anything on the ground for any damage or anything like that.
One thing that, the reason we wanted to bring this to council right now is, you know, this, this sign out on Evergreen Road really needs to go out for bids back very soon, because once the construction begins again in the spring, they'll start removing, you know, the signage, the entrance marker signs that we currently have. So, we would like to be able to get that sign out there as soon as we can, and as long as we're putting that out to bid, it's to a price advantage to package this in as well, and try to get them bid at the same time.
You do have some, obviously, when you're ordering the, the electronic units. One thing that, the reason we wanted to bring this to Council right now is, you know, this, this sign out on Evergreen Road really needs to go out for bids back very soon, because once the construction begins again in the spring, they'll start removing, you know, the signage, the entrance marker signs that we currently have. So we would like to be able to get that sign out there as soon as we can, and as long as we're putting that out to bid, it's to a price advantage to package this in as well, and try to get them bid at the same time. You do have some, obviously, when you're ordering the, the electronic units, you, you have a cost advantage to ordering them together, but also, when you're fabricating these items, if you can fabricate, fabricate them together, you also have some cost scale there too. Because you can order aluminum, and maybe use some of the aluminum and construction products from the one that's out on the droughts or whatever that's off, out on the front lawn, you may be able to use them in this sign, in the construction of this sign.
Any questions? Got it.
Just curious, um, we've analyzed time, they're in the Bridge Street Park, right?
Actually, no, they've actually moved from the Bridge Street Park down to, no, no, they're still in Southfield. They're still in Southfield. Oh, sorry about that. I didn't think about that. They are on Telegraph Road, though they are still in Southfield.
They still have to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Mr. Chris.
Why did you pick sandstone as the signature? I mean, you're kind of dated.
Uh, we have our choice, uh, this is just a cultured stone product. It was something that was designed, they actually had this, and then we also had one that had some other treatments on top. If the, you know, obviously, you know, there's so many different types of cultured stone now that, I, I think it was picked, a lot of it was done with Mary Carlock prior to us getting involved in it. And that was, we, we had seen some samples of other municipalities in their parks and rec areas have the same kind of stonework. In fact, the contractor had done this similar treatment in other communities, so.
I'm trying to think of a sign at Carpenter Lake, what is the?
We could actually have that. It's more split stone, there's a very small amount of it, though, it is very, very, very small.
Yeah, it's more of a, it's a round stone.
Yeah, it's, it's more like, more like a field stone with a split base. That was split, yeah. And of course, that's available, I, I mean, all of those treatments are all available in cultured stone, just a matter of-
But we could do the same thing, not as easily.
You could use the same sign that Carpenter Lake, and put the electronic portion in the middle of the park.
Well, we could change the stone to be the same kind of stone that-
It seems like you would want to create a theme for the parks that, uh-
Sure, sure. That's a fairly easy change. Again, it's, it's cultured stone, and they make all kinds of cultured stone.
And again, we're, we're open to suggestions, as the gentleman mentioned, we just want to kind of get the approval to move forward, and we can write new things into this text moving forward.
Okay, so this is necessarily the final designs, correct? Okay. Yeah, I just think this looks a little classier to me.
Yeah, this one picks up our welcome signs. It's got a similar design to what you're coming off of Telegraph, the ones we have with Delta U and that.
Right. Okay.
Well, I, frankly, I like that. I like that, um, stone because it's, uh, just into the park setting, it's kind of a fit. The Carpenter Lake thing is that it's totally different, and I don't think we have to keep looking at it, but it, it looks better in real life than it does in the pictures kind of, actually, but I like that, I think, I think it's classy, and I think it's, um, has that little bit of rough, you know, just a rough set, it's, um, I think it's appropriate for the site.
I can just interject one thing through the chair. Um, one of the points that we like about that sign is that we'll have control over the message that's inputted on the screen. We have a full-time marketing person that can work in conjunction with the facility supervisor, and on the other end, work with our community relations department, that there's a uniform marketing message across the city.
When you think about the message, the uniform message, are you thinking of the south side of the city, or, uh, you know, where Beachwood is, or here? Because we've got two different brandings going on, and I guess that's what we're trying to figure out.
Yes and no. It'll be a combination, it'll list upcoming events, different activities going on that are specific to that site, but also more far-reaching, you know, in terms of the overall branding of the city.
So with that said, in terms of the branding piece, could you do a sign similar to what that Carpenter Lake, that would still give you the electronics, if you designed something?
If I might, sure, you could, um, I guess, the issue with this design itself is, you would have very limited, you'd have very limited area for the rest of the message other than the message board. Really matching this design to that, I don't, I don't know if this was ever designed when Mary Carlock did it as something that was intended to be park-wide or not. But yes, to answer your question specifically, yes, you could design a sign with an electronic portion that looks like this. You could.
Well, maybe you can bring in some options, along with samples of the bricks that we know are there.
Sure. Yeah, it's going to be a two-sided sign, right? Correct.
Yes, yes. Well, if I, lots of communities, you know, and I'll, I'll use Pleasant Ridge, Farmington Hills, and, but it's a very centralized brand in all the park signs. We've not moved, I've not noticed the consistency. The consistency I'm seeing these, and here is in Southfield, the center and all, the Carpenter Lake, I think the background color is a yellow goldy with a burgundy. Correct. And then this looks like it's more of a silver bronze with the, a burgundy. Um, you know, if, if that's something you'd like to see us pursue, we could start, we, we'd go out and, you know, probably with the planning department, do an assessment of what we currently have, and then something over time, we could do-
Has to upgrade.
Okay.
Has to upgrade the sign.
Yeah. Yep.
You have to look at it.
And also, if I might, this oval could match this oval, it's just an oval piece that matches the logo itself. Those kind of components can be changed, we can even get you some options on those if, if you'd like. If you'd like us to have the feel more like what's out there, we can work with Terry, and we can go out and look at what the feel is, and see if we can, maybe, from what I'm hearing, like combine those. Yeah. To have some sort of central theme in, in the park's signage. Well, if I, I mean, I mean, clearly, we've got Southfield DVA, the city center, you spoke early about the Telegraph Algae Corridor, and you're about, in the next two months, you'll see something down the Smart Zone. All of those have a subset brand identity. You're still, they're all part of Southfield, and you've got to figure out what links them all. And candidly, I, I, I think you're elongated, you did oval, Southfield, the center of all is part of that, then your next thing is color and texture. And that's what you recall when we were going through the stuff for city center, I think, did they, not a platinum, or a champagne color?
Champagne titanium, or-
I think it was a champagne color. Correct.
Yeah, I think the, oh, it's kind of like when you're driving down the road and you see the oval on the Ford.
Yep.
You, you know, you can't really tell what kind of car it is, nevertheless, a lot of you see a, another, you know, Subaru, just got the same oval, they, they're going to pick a Ford.
Pleasant Ridge even, even has it on its directional signs going into their parks.
That seems to relate more to me with what we're planning for the future, kind of this, because it's a cabin too.
Well, I think that they were done the same time, and I think that's where something else was came from.
I like it for that reason, I like, but it's still, it's still just in the beach, I personally like it, to my personal interest.
So can you bring effect options, like you said, based upon the theme of the park, as well as the city and branding and what-
Materials, and we can work the two concepts.
But it would be helpful if, if we had some kind of direction in which way you want us to go with this. We can come back with a lot of options, but if it's not-
Don't bring a lot.
You're thinking-
Don't bring a lot.
Yeah. We'll bring some samples of the stone, uh, different varieties of stone, we'll even bring in, um, and, um, we can talk about maybe having a couple different options for these treatments, to see if we can, we can look at that, too. So maybe like another option or two besides this?
And could you just get a color picture of this?
Sure, absolutely, and, and we can actually drop, we'll drop it into the PowerPoint, too, so it'll be able to see.
Yeah, I just, if you really want to look at this, you've got to have a color picture.
Correct.
This is one of your books, it's on your package.
Oh, good.
Oh, the, oh, the, I thought you meant this one.
No, no, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and, uh, did, uh, this water, Southfield Medical Marijuana, what do you have?
Uh, that would be the planner in myself. Uh, I can kind of start. You recall that, um, Mr. Crowe had brought proposed zoning tax amendments regarding medical marijuana at the December 15 council meeting? There was a public hearing at the town, we had quite a few residents that spoke, um, I would say generally in opposition to allowing, um, medical marijuana within the city. I think we tried to explain that medical marijuana was already allowed in the city by state law, and the goal and the intent here was to regulate where a medical marijuana facility could be located. I think the, kind of the end of the discussion was that, um, council wanted to hear from the police, knowing what kind of enforcement issues we would have. In addition to that, we talked that night about, um, that we were going to put together a licensing ordinance for these facilities as well, so that it would, not only would you have the proper zoning, but then you come in for a license. And so, I've attached a draft of a proposed licensing ordinance, and, uh, Mr. Crowe obviously has the zoning amendments as well. So, that's what we wanted to discuss this evening.
And I know the police chief is here, and one of the directions that the council had given us was to consult with the building officials, the fire chiefs, and the police chiefs on what the inspection, enforcement, and leasing may or may not cost. And so I don't want to speak for, for the chief since he's here. After we address that issue, I will spend a few minutes just highlighting the zoning tax and what we're trying to regulate.
Good thanks, sir.
Good evening, Council President, Council. The question to me was, what type of issues and pressures would it present to the police department if we had medical marijuana facilities in the city? And I talked with, with colleagues in the area, we did a little bit of research, there's not a lot of data out there because it's such a new issue. So a lot of what I was getting back was anecdotal from other chiefs and other executives around this area. And basically, what they're telling me is that if we know exactly where these facilities are, we can better and more effectively police the, these facilities. From what I understand, if, from talking with legal, if, if there is, if we don't have an, have an ordinance that regulates this, these facilities can pretty much go anywhere. If that happens, it presents, um, a high degree of pressure on the police department, because now we have to do, we have to figure out where they are, we have to, we have to scatter our resources, but if we know that they're only going in four areas in our city, and we know that only five, each one of these facilities have five clients that could, can go to these facilities, it makes it a lot easier for us to police it. So, the, the, um, the concerns from, and some of the issues some of these, some of the other cities are having, is potentially the, um, the crimes that are associated with, with people who know that we have medical marijuana facilities in the city. So, we, we have what we call the scavenger-type mentality. They know that there's a facility here, and so they ride around, and they're not really from our city, so they do, they commit other types of crimes. That's one concern. Another concern is the, it break, the breaking and entering of these facilities. So, some of these studies have had problems with that. So, um, basically, if it, if it, if it comes here, and we have four facilities in our city, what we would do is pretty much adjust our, our patrol pattern in order to, um, to, to get some coverage everywhere these facilities are, and also increase different types of enforcement in order to deal with the scavenger-type mentality and scavenger-type criminals who come into communities that have these types of things. But it, but the bottom line is, we can handle it, it's not something that will, will stress our resources, you know, I can adjust some things, and, and if it comes, we can effectively police this issue.
Also, any other questions? Mr. Crowe, did you have anything else to add?
Yes, if I could. So again, I, I know we've, we've discussed this a few times last year, but I just want to summarize, as, as Ms. Ward has stated, the state currently allows for these types of facilities to take place. And we're not proposing to regulate residential use by the occupant as a qualifying patient. They can't, um, they can't be a primary caregiver in their home, so it just limits to the residential use as permitted by state law. But if there is somebody that has a legitimate purpose of being a primary caregiver to five qualifying patients, they need a place, a secure place, in order to grow, um, the marijuana as described by this law, and we certainly want to keep that element out of the residential districts. So in general zoning terms, we have to meet the reasonable test, and we have to provide some place that meets that reasonable test. We can't prohibit it anywhere, because in, in that case, we're allowing it everywhere we don't regulate. So based on the standards that we've, we've come up with, and I, and I'll review those briefly, there's two potential areas in light industrial districts, that's the central business park area and the Bridge Street area. And we prohibit these facilities. These are, these are not, um, these are not dispensaries, you have to have an intimate relationship with a, with a qualifying patient, so they're not open to the public, whereas some other cities have these dispensaries. So we're not proposing that, we're proposing basically a growing facility with, with the intent that, um, they have to be 500 feet from residentially zoned districts or drug-free school zones, they can't be within 500 feet of an adult-regulated use school, church, childcare facility or park, or within 1,500 feet of pawn shops and alternative financial establishments. Again, that, that narrows it down within the aisle to seven potential sites within the city. Then there's some other qualifiers that limit it to no more than four potential sites. I'm just going to highlight the zoning, is that usable marijuana on site shall, shall be kept in a stored, enclosed, locked facility accessible only to the caregiver and the qualifying patient. And part of the licensing process will get the police department, the fire department, and the building officials involved in the inspection process before they open up. Consumption of marijuana on the premises is prohibited, there's no outdoor, open use or displayed marijuana upon the licensed premises, no more than five qualifying patients per primary caregiver, and for each patient, it shall be limited to 2.5 ounces of usable marijuana, and no more than 12 marijuana plants kept in an indoor and closed locked facility. So if you do the math, that's 60 total plants plus 12 of the primary caregiver, so no more than 72 plants per facility. They're subject to periodic and unannounced inspections to ensure compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. Hours of operation, we propose similar hours typical of what a drugstore may or may not be open during weekdays and weekends. And then they have to be a minimum of 250 feet from another qualifying site. So then it takes those seven potential sites down to potentially four, depending on who opens first and how they're regulated. Drive-through facilities are prohibited, there has to be a security and lighting plan that will be reviewed by the police department. There's no lording allowed, no one under age of 18 unless they're accompanied by a legal guardian. The location from which the primary caregiver manufactures, stores, distributes medical marijuana to a qualifying patient should not be used by another primary caregiver, so you can't have more than one primary caregiver using the same facility. And, um, they can't be advertised as a medical marijuana provisioning center, safety compliance facility, dispensary, compassion club, clinic, or hospital, that's a loophole that other communities have found. So we have pretty tight regulations, one might could even argue that they're very strict, but we're trying to meet the letter of the state law, still provide regulation through zoning, and then we have this added protection of the business licensing. And again, this is our proposal to try to comply with state law and also meet our reasonable test. So this was before- So this was before you, uh, public caring was held in December, so an additional public caring is not needed, and we'd like to, if, if council still desires to bring this back at your February meeting for some type of action.
Any questions, Council?
So what, this is, what you brought, or just discussed is absolutely identical to what we did back on December fifteenth.
It is for the zoning regulations, but we've added the licensing provision, and you did ask us to.
Your part.
Yes, my part is exactly the same, uh, with the exception of clarifying the, the name of, of the act.
When you said that there's no consumption of marijuana on premises, I didn't hear you say whether or not the caregiver could provide other products.
The licensing ordinance deals with that, says no.
Okay.
No food or beverage type things, no.
Type, okay.
'Cause I, that was expressed at the public hearing, that, you know, it could be the.
Brownies.
Brownies or the suckers or the candy or something that are laced with marijuana, so, right, that would be.
So there's no other products available?
Right, right.
It's just strictly the 12.
It was.
Maximum 12.
Right.
Maximum 12 plants per.
Right, right.
It's actually the plants that reduce down to 2.5 ounces of usable marijuana.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that can be distributed.
Over the counter. Um, I was listening to radio, and it's interesting, the candidate that the president has nominated for attorney general has no use for marijuana at all. And, uh, 'cause they asked, and she, she said that she has no use for marijuana at all, so, you know, this may be a.
It could be, yeah, it could be a different scenario.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Terry, you know, one of the other things that seemed to trip up people was, um, what's a dispensary versus what's a facility? And thinking about that from December, it seemed to me, we could've been a little more clear that a dispensary is like a store. Uh, you go in and, and you put your money down, and you walk out, and so on. This is really a growing facility, limited to five customers.
Right.
And I, I don't know that we were that clear before.
We could make sure we incorporate that on the.
Yeah, I think, I think there was, at the time, a conscious decision not, not to get into it too much, 'cause we've already had a couple workshops on it. Um, we'll, we'll make sure, uh, in tandem that we spend the time, as I did today, actually laying out the strategic pieces of, of the proposal.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, I suspect that the part of this is say that it shall only be for these people, those, these people who are the caregivers, you know, it's so restrictive. I think we have to say that in public, because people don't understand how restrictive it is. Even some council members may not, I mean, I know what we've done with them. And I didn't until I saw this, I had no idea about that, restriction of language, and, uh, I think, I think it's important to say that in the public, because it removes a lot of the idea of, you know, that you, it's so restrictive, and I really think that's in our best interest to do that.
The only thing is, we obviously don't wanna make a record that says, "We've made it so restrictive so nobody comes in," because that'll, that'll backfire on students.
I'm not gonna say that, but certainly, right.
Part of the, part of the language, it's in print. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's on public record, so that's part of it.
Right, that we're regulating it really to protect the overall public and.
But if you just say that it's, it's for these people under these circumstances, and we say that to the public.
Sure, we can do that.
I mean, then that, because they have so many questions and so many doubts, and they're so sure it's gonna be a beauty, and they're so sure the people are gonna come in and, you know, this says it's so limited, and I think it's in our best interest to repeat what's in print. Can't go wrong with that.
Right.
Is this the point where anything talked about fines or anything for breaking any of these ordinance?
Well, it would be, on the licensing side, it would be a civil infraction, and also, we could go through a revocation of their license. If they lose their license, they can't operate. And yours would be the.
Code, code enforcement.
The code enforcement, so, right, we've got them really both ways, I think.
And, and if, if I can just reiterate, um, maybe I didn't point it out, this is a special use approval, so the council has general standards that they can apply to the specific standards, and if they are in violation of any of the special use provisions, we can also revoke their approval. So this, this is an added, um, step that ensures that the public is adequately, um, noticed within 350 feet of these facilities, and that you have that special use powers of approval and, and revocation.
You know, we're spending an awful lot of time making sure that we do it just exactly right, so that we only have four, um, of these caregiver locations in the city. Doesn't mean that we don't have 20,000 other ones.
Well.
Where they're grown around.
That's right, that's right. And, and we specifically say in the licensing piece as well, is that if you have your card as qualified patient, and you wanna grow your five in your home, and you're not selling it or giving it away to anybody, or you're not a primary caregiver. Right, it's in your basement, that's right, it's going on now, and it's probably going on much more sensitive than that even.
And that's part of the argument, to say that maybe it's not that we've limited it to the point because we're, we're allowing the residential use of it. Also adjacent communities do provide it, and we wink, wink, whoop the other way, if someone has to just cross the, cross eight mile or, or another boundary road, they have access to it.
Sure. That's the problem with the states that allow it, and the border states that don't allow it. Folks come from the, the not-along states and get it. As long as they don't run afoul of the police, they take it back to their house.
And I, I think you mentioned, you know, we, we've used the, um, adult movie theaters, we've, we've used the scenario of mobile home parks where communities try to all out, prohibit it, and then it backlash, and then courts are deciding you gotta have 5,000 of them, because you don't meet the reasonable test. So, we're trying, we're trying to walk a fine line.
Yeah. Well, I don't have any problem with this, but it's, if people think that these are the only four places in, in Southfield where people can get marijuana, or have marijuana, not get, but have marijuana, or.
Legal, legal medical marijuana.
We just don't understand what the.
Right.
The issue is.
Okay, without any objections, we're moving forward. Okay, we're gonna move, kinda moving toward the communication agenda, Council. Um, last week to this Channel Seven, we had an article about our streets and roads blocking the sidewalks for our children going to the public space, and we're gonna talk to Mr. Dorn and what is Michael Mander, and we're gonna be doing our biggest Southfield State sidewalk project, and, um, Michael's gonna go over at our next conference in detail in terms of, um, what we're gonna be doing to encourage kids to do the sidewalk vote. And I did briefly, but. No, yeah. Shared that information with the chairman of our neighborhood services, I think, last Thursday. All right, we'll move to the communication agenda. This person is Pamela.
Pamela Gerald P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-4155. For the residents listening to this meeting on YouTube, if you need to reach me, again, my number's 248-346-0439. Several years ago, and I'm gonna say years ago, and emphasize years ago, an elected official in the city of Southfield was quoted in a book saying, "The quality of life in Southfield depended on the quantity of whites." And it appears as if that mindset has trickled into the administration. For a city that is predominantly white, or predominantly black, why isn't there black leadership within these departments? Why has the city not taken serious the employees that work here? We also have an elected official here that likes to pride themselves on having worked for the EEOC, and they deal with, um, lots of issues in reference to discrimination. What about the pay raises? It just amazes me that this city boasts about, we haven't laid anybody off, we're, uh, we've retained all of our people, but yet, you're losing good people through attrition, and these people are leaving this city that's supposed to be the center of it all, going and working for the state, going to work for other cities that are nearby. Why? Because of a hostile environment as it relates to pay, uh, their ability to rise up in the city and get promoted? It just, you guys are just missing the mark. How can you sit back and say you're a city on the move, diverse, center of it all, when people have worked for this city and have not had a raise in 12 to 15 years? You still have acting directors in these departments, and why? Look at how long our city attorney was the acting city attorney before she got the position. Look at how long, uh, human resources director was acting. How long has Bob Block been, uh, acting director for Parks and Recreation? Instead of you guys being so concerned about Denso signs and how it looks, you need to sit down and overhaul these departments, and go ahead and do your job, and appoint some people in these positions, and I'm gonna yield some of my time to give you a chance to ponder over it. And before I leave, I wanna make sure that number six, that special assessment that you're going to impose for the Bridge Street Hilltop construction, where you're gonna put the medical marijuana house, that that SAD does not involve residents. Residents should not have to pay a special assessment district for you to put the medical marijuana there. Thank you. And I would prefer you wait until my time is up to tell me if that happens. Thank you.
All right, the next person on our agenda is June Moore Jordan. The next person is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. During the January 12th, 2015 council meeting, this council scheduled a council meeting for January 21st, 2015, but failed to post concurrently a state mandated notice, that is, an update to reflect this additional meeting. This was in violation of the Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, Section 5, Subsection 3, and I quote from the act. If there's a change in the schedule of regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, a public notice stating a new dates, times, and places of its regular meetings, unquote. Instead of posting a new update, this council chose to remove the existing May 19th update from the legal notice bulletin board, thus leaving this space blank for the next 14 days. This was in violation of the act. Section 5, Subsection 2, and I quote from the act. For regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within 10 days after the first meeting of the public body in each calendar year, a public notice stating the dates, times, and places of its regular meetings, unquote. Not only was there no yearly meeting schedule posted for council, but currently, there is no yearly meeting schedule posted for each of council subcommittees in violation of the act. Section 48, check it out, check it out. Also, the city has 29 boards and commissions, but only 12 of the 29 comply with the act and post their yearly meeting schedule. The rest, the remaining 17, are in violation of the act. Section 48, check it out, check it out. At this time, I'd like to thank this council for the Pamela Gerald Amendment of 2014, that is Rule Number Four of Council's Rules of Procedure. If you had not passed this amendment, I would not have discovered these PA 267 violations. Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
All right, we will take the motion along. We have a motion by Mr. Preacher. So, it should be a roll. The vote goes to him. Madam fifty, please. Yes, uh, we'll call this, is, uh, Councilman Fru.
Yes.
Councilman Preacher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Seymour.
Yes.
Councilman Seiber.
Yes.
Council President Jordan.
Yes.
So moved.